Often the little cameras, make sure bikes are on and stuff like that.
Ready?
Uh, yeah.
It is seven o'clock and I call the September fifth, 2023 regular meeting of Franklin County Planning Commission meeting to order. Before we get into the meeting, I will turn things over to staff to discuss, to discuss meeting format.
So tonight's meeting, we have the hybrid in-person online meeting platform. Uh, just remember, please mute, uh, when not speaking. If you wish to comment any clarification on public hearing item, please send us an email at planninginquiry@frankcountywa.gov before the public comment period closes. Once public comp period has closed on said item, ki- uh, oh, sorry. Comments will not be included as part of discussion. Those in attendance, please remember to speak into the microphone and addressing staff or public comments slash testimonies.
For planning staff, please call, roll in, announce whether or not we have a quorum.
Mike Kraus?
Here.
Mike Vincent?
Here.
Layton Lowe?
Here.
Melinda Didier?
Here.
Stacy Neiften?
Here.
Manny Gutierrez? Peter Harpster? Mr. Chair, we do have a quorum.
Will staff in attendance, please introduce yourselves.
Eric Roden, Director.
Ryan Nelson, Planner One. Uh, Aaron Guttersen, Planner Two.
My mic was not on.
I will now lead us in pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Lowe.
One moment, please, I'm sorry. Um, two items at the request of the applicant. Um, condit- um, item number one A and item number one B have been pulled from this tonight's agenda. Um, they will be brought back to the planning commission on, at the October meeting. So, um, that was at the request of the applicant. And they have that right, so. So tonight's agenda will only have, um, public hearing item number two, CUP 2023 dash zero three, CIPA 2023 oh nine. The first two items in the agenda, it's removed from tonight's agenda. Sorry, now we can do the approval.
Same motion?
Same motion.
Gotcha, same second. It has been moved by Commissioner Lowe and seconded by Commissioner Neiften, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the June 2023 meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Neiften and seconded by Commissioner Didier, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is now time for the public hearing portion of our meeting. Good evening and welcome. I will turn things briefly over to our staff host, who will go over the ground rules for tonight's hearing.
So in-person public testimony be divided into groups for and against slash neutral. They'll be called upon to speak during their allotted in-person public testimony section, giving a name for the audio record and position on the proposal. Uh, WebEx public testimony called upon individually during the WebEx public testimony of the hearing, give her a name for the audio record, as well as if they're in favor, neutral, or against proposal. Please mute audio when not speaking. Uh, email comments received during the public hearing will be read into the record by staff after the WebEx public testimony of the hearing. All comments and questions shall be addressed to the planning commission and should be relevant to the application and not be of a personal nature. Each speaker shall have five minutes to provide testimony and shall speak into the microphone. Please avoid repetitive comments. If there are a large number of speakers who are part of a group or organization, please select a representative to speak on behalf of the group. Behavior such as clapping, booing, hissing, or remarks prohibited. Every citizen here tonight should have the opportunity to testify without such distractions.
Are there any questions regarding the public hearing ground rules? Turning for a moment to our commission members, let us keep in mind that we are prohibited by law from communicating with members of the public on the subject matter of these hearings, except in these hearings. We also may not participate in a discussion in which there is an appearance of conflict of interest to the average person. So let us take a minute to consider as to the matters which are before us for hearing today. Whether we had any ex parte communications, whether we have any ownership interests in the properties, whether we have any business dealings with proponents or opponents of the matters, or whether we have business associates or immediate family who may either benefit or be harmed by such a decision in these matters. Are there any commission members who have declarations at this time regarding any of these items on the agenda?
Commissioner, I do, I know Mr. Mullen. I, we don't have any business dealings with him. So if anyone wants me to recuse myself, I'm.
I'm in the same position, I guess, but I will not be recusing myself.
I'm in the same position as well.
Okay, everybody knows Randy. Uh, let, let the record show, there were some declarations, but nobody will be excluded. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show, there were no objections. The order of the hearing shall be as follows. Planning staff shall provide a staff report, the commission may ask questions of staff. The applicant or applicant's representative's presentation. In-person public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project. WebEx public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project. Email public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project. To be read into the record by staff. Then final staff comments. Clarification of public statements that occurred during the testimony portion of the public hearing. Close the public hearing and planning commission discussion of the proposed action. Are there any procedural questions before we begin the public hearing? Okay, so.
As mentioned, just now read that one.
Okay. The public hearing for item number one, the comprehensive plan amendment, CPA docket, has been pushed to October's planning commission meeting at the request of the applicant. That was item one, now we're on item two. Item two is public hearing for a conditional use permit, CUP 2023 dash zero three, CIPA 2023 dash nine. Is a proposal to allow for the construction of a booster station, water storage tanks, and a backup generator for a new Group A public water system. The proposed facility will serve multiple properties slated for future residential development among the north-south Fraser Road alignment. The proposal will be constructed upon approximately half an acre of the northwest corner of parcel number one, two, four, dash, three hundred, dash, three, seven, three. I declare the public hearing for CUP 2023 dash three, CIPA 2023 dash nine, to be open at seven oh eight. May we have staff prevent, present the staff report?
Thanks, Chair. Um, yes, as mentioned, this is for a proposed residential water system. Um, it is to be located along, and I'll, I'll be showing maps and various other things. Um, and it also does need, this is a couple of things. One, we are not here to say yes or no as to whether or not a water system can go in, that's not the purview of the county. That's handled by ecology, Washington Department of Drinking Water, and, and other facilities along those lines. What we are here to discuss is the sighting of the accoutrements, I guess you could say, to the system, which, meaning the, the location where the pumps, the tanks, um, and those types of things are located. Um, in other words, do they meet the requirements of our height requirements? Do they, you know, those types of things? Are there other conditions or requirements associated with it? The parties, this is another one of these situations where they are coming to the planning commission, staff, and the board to, can they proceed? The details as to how everything will be designed is, is left to engineering, it's effectively designed, built. We would not have a say whether or not it should be a twelve-inch pipe, or a ten-inch pipe, or, you know, the flow rates, all of that stuff. That is handled by state agencies, um, it is not us. What we're here to primarily deal with is, and that's why in the, the explanation says half acre. The pipe, no, it's going to be longer than that. But the actual site that's going to be above ground, that's the stuff that we kind of have some say on. Um, it's just the nature of what these types of systems are. Water systems are generally viewed as a positive over, um, wells, you know, individual wells. Um, there's net benefits, there's, you know, generally considered that way. So like I said, the state, the water, all waters in the state of Washington, not all, most, are controlled by the state. There's very few circumstances. So if you see a named pond on a, on a, um, map, even if it's completely surrounded by private property, it's very probable that that water is actually a water of the state. If it's a naturally occurring system. Man-made systems, that's a different dynamic and things like that, but if it's naturally water, well, groundwater is naturally water. And the state lays claim to all that water. So they control the distribution, we don't. And that's the case for any well. Um, that's why requests for wells are not brought through our department, they're got, done through the Department of Ecology. Because that starts getting into things like water rights, availability of water. And that's the body that keeps track and maintains that because in their mind, are, all our water is kind of a single system. Or maybe there's regional systems, depending on your WIRAs and various other elements. Still not sure how Franklin County avoided becoming part of a WIRA, but that's to our benefit. Um, the WIRA system, which is Water Resource Infiltration Area, or something along those lines, is what that stands for. That's a whole different process, there's a whole different, you know, like Spokane County and most of the other counties are under this system as, and it's still a work in progress. Franklin County, from what I understand, is not part of the WIRA system, I don't know why. So just, just as click, you know, I just wanted to get that out, the understanding that we do not control whether a person can put in a well, what the flow rates of that water source are, that is purely within the con, the control of the state. Um, whether or not somebody can convert a well right to a different use, all of those types of things, that's completely outside of Franklin County's control. Um, we're not even consulted in the conversations when it comes to things like that. So that's purely between the applicant and the state agencies. However, so what are we here for? Why do this? Well, they're putting in some tanks and various other things that are all above ground. So generally speaking, things that are above surface, we're going to have say on. Why? Because it can affect the aesthetic environment. Um, it may be a potential hazard, may block views, may, you know, who knows? But if it's underground, generally it's not going to affect folks. Um, you know, gas lines, all of that stuff is, the, the right to proceed with that stuff is generally handled at the state level. And then, but we have a little bit of influence, like I said, as far as what these structures will be. Um, concerns may come with, well, what happens after the fact? Well, that's where we come in, and if there's issues or concerns, then we have to make sure that we make sure that that doesn't happen. Go ahead.
Our concerns be.
I can't hear you.
Wouldn't our concerns be mostly related to just the, the items that we are able to give the CUP for?
Correct. However, some folks aren't necessarily aware of our role in this circumstance. And it's not, when I say our, I mean the county, not just the planning commission. Um, this is not a, it's, it's what's known as an unclassified use, so that's the first thing. Unclassified uses are permitted in any zone in Franklin County, unless expressly prohibited in that zone. Well, we only have one express prohibition in Franklin County, and that's for cannabis, or, that's the old term, marijuana. Uh, retail, production, processing, or sale. Um, city is a different animal, and the city's doing whatever the city wants to do, but in Franklin County, that's the rule. It's the only prohibition, generally speaking. Um, so, um, unclassified uses are, are, all utility systems are considered unclassified uses. I'll get into more of this as we go with the presentation. So as mentioned, it's the Richview Water System. This address sixteen oh three regards to half acre site that we're discussing, not the entirety of the system. However, I will have a map that shows you the, the run of it. It's on parcel number one, two, four, three hundred, three, seven, three. The zoning is AP twenty. I, of course, now you get the hiccups. Agricultural production twenty, comp plan designation is agricultural. And the entire property that this area is connected to is approximately forty-four and a half acres. Um, it is east of Fraser Road, west of Richview Drive, north of Fanning Road, and south of Self Landing Road. As mentioned, it's a request to construct Rock Bay Water System. Um, and we were provided a site plan that provides the location of two reservoir tanks, a booster station, two wells, a backup generation, generator. Fencing, driveway, parking area, the locations of four-inch and twelve-inch diameter water piping, and an underground irrigation canal. So this. Need to turn on my gizmo. That's the forty-four point five acres. This is the sighting and location of the proposed, um, facilities. So we have the reservoirs, backup generator, booster station. The pumps, I don't even think are above ground, they're all below ground, so these four elements are what we're going to see, and then fencing and, and those types of things. This is what the site currently looks like. It's not being used at, for an ag use, I mean, as far as that piece of it. The, the overall property is ag, but that's kind of a crop corner, except for it's a square parcel, but we would normally call that a crop corner. On or about July twentieth, twenty twenty-three, sent notices to the technical agencies, property owners within one mile. Franklin County Graphic, we also posted a land use action sign. Um, issued a CIPA optional determination of non-significance. That's not uncommon on these technical projects. So what will happen is after this hearing, based on all the comments and the final disposition, we will go either maintain our DNS or, or modify it. I'm sorry, not our DNS, but the final determination will be established afterwards and posted for ten days. And that CIPA registry number is two oh two, three oh three, four one two. So palm full build-out system will serve multiple properties slated for future residential development along the north-south alignment of Fraser Road. So. Oh, apparently that changes the slide, you hit the wrong button. Okay, so the actual site that we're discussing is right here. Each of these represents different subdivisions that are proposed, um, or desired. Uh, this is the Underwood, which has already been preliminarily approved. This one hasn't, that's, that we haven't seen anything on, we haven't seen anything on this one either. Uh, that's Kohler, I think, if I remember right, yeah, that's Kohler. And then this is the Mullen, um, subdivision. That's where, uh, drawing a blank was that road, it's got some guy's name.
Or John Mullen Trail?
John, yeah, John Mullen Trail is right in this area. Um, this is Fraser Road, the run of the primary line is along Fraser Road. That would then, you know, there'd be smaller ones that pop off into these to serve these subdivisions. So it would be considered a utility facility under FCC seventeen point eight two oh two oh on classified uses, subsection M. As I mentioned, it's, um, they're required to go under, undergo CUP in case there's any conditions, but they are permitted uses. We can add conditions and, and things like that. Needs of a community, never heard it quite put that way, but, and I, I don't disagree with it. An unclassified use is designed to service the needs of a community that are outside the confines of. that are outside the confines of normal zoning development regulations. Other examples are, you know, schools maybe, or adult residential homes, facilities like that. They're unclassified, doesn't mean, it means that you can put them in residential areas, but you can also put them in commercial areas. Industrial may not be a good match because that's another prohibition, just thought of it. Because we don't allow for residential development in industrial zones. However, in commercial zones, we do allow for multifamily with a conditional use permit. So point being is there's, there's a list in, in the code that lists a bunch of known ones. And it also states that basically if it doesn't fall on this list or any of the other lists, and that's when you hear us start talking about unlisted. Those could be in theory, if the, the agreement's different. If the, say we interpret the code, right? Staff looks at the code, says this is the closest fit to it. We'll go through a conditional use permit. And part of what's going on there is, do the deciding or the recommending bodies also agree with staff's interpretation that the closest fit is this thing? Sometimes it could be the case that, you know, differing minds differ. And that's what happens when you have like a use that we just, we've never seen before. Well, you can't say it's not prohibited. And you also can't say it's, wait, I said that wrong. You can't say it's prohibited, and you can't say it's not allowed because nobody's ever asked the question. So those are also unclassified uses. So then you have a conditional use permit, you run it through the process. If the, everybody agrees, or at least the decision makers agree, then that could be cited there. And that's, that's how you deal with, say, things that have never been seen before, new pilots and stuff like that. Anyways. So utilities are considered unclassified uses because, well, everybody needs utilities. Pretty much regardless of the use type. Keep doing this because my shoulder hurts, sorry. Health and safety measures. They're going through the review process with the Department of Health, State Department of Health, Office of Drinking Water, the Department of Ecology, and the Franklin County Conservancy Board. They'll have to undergo annual testing. And that's just, I mean, a standard. All, all public water systems are required to do that. Applicant is further stated that new water system will adopt policies that are consistent with federal, state, and local regulations, DOH guidelines, and the municipal water law. So how does it fit with the comprehensive plan? The review of the twenty eighteen comp plan. The proposed construction will meet and comply with certain goals and policies found in the rural lands element, natural environment element, and the utilities elements. The area has been determined not to be designated as an agricultural resource use or ALTAQ. Agricultural land of long-term commercial significance. Therefore, the project area is not essential for remaining an agricultural presence. So here is a map of designated resource lands in Franklin County. So the red are the prime irrigated land, crop circles, those types of things. Plus they're, so they're, they're irrigated and they got really good dirt. Is basically kind of in a nutshell what that stands for. Quincy Fields means they have really good soil. And again, when irrigated especially, they produce phenomenal stuff. So those are designated. And then prime drylands, which are generally used for grazing purposes. They don't necessarily produce a crop, but they also have potentiality because they have good soils. Or they're good rangeland or whatever. Dryland means that it's not part of the, you'll notice all the dry land is on one side of the county. On the, all the other stuff's on the other side. Well, that's because they haven't finished this side with the irrigation.
And they won't.
So that's, that's, when we add water to this, it will start to look like that. Anyways, that's another subject, so. And then here's a real close zoom in. And you can see that the red, yes, it is surrounded. And then over here on this side of the road is lammert. Called the shoreline development area, residential development. So that's, so Fraser Road pretty much acts, or that alignment acts as the border. The east edge of the shoreline district is on this side. If you get down there, stuff can flare out a little bit differently, but. So the parcels on the outside of the lammert, however, no services are proposed, you know, up in here at this point. In order for those lands to develop into something else, there'd have to be a comp plan designation change. They would have to be de-designated as ALTAQs. The county would have to go through a full-blown analysis of ag lands to determine whether or not we have adequate. And then if we have more than we need, then we could start, in theory, pulling off properties. But that's not something that we would even probably, well, we, we just, we can only do that during our ten-year updates. Because that's when we have the money to perform stuff, types of studies. As far as de-designation goes. Comprehensive plan, goals and policies which the proposed construction comply with. Policy number five, goal one of the rural land sub-element. So by, that can, can, you know, water systems can. And thankfully, it looks like Harms is here. So I'm sure he can speak to more of the technical aspects and, you know, flow rates, expected rates. Information like that was provided in your packets. But again, it's informational and because we don't control what those flow rates would be. That's always going to be up to another agencies. Protect and enhance surface water and groundwater quality for human health. So we have a lot of wells. And if you got a one acre lot, you can drill, in theory, another well. Nobody knows, whereas this would be regulated, and that's why it meets it. This system is a controlled flow rate. They know what's coming in, coming out, all of those types of things. So that starts to help with some of the potential. Generally speaking, the state prefers public water systems because they can sit there and actually observe what's going on compared to individual wells. Or what they call the exempt wells. Because those are a little, they don't put meters on them, let's put it that way. This would have meters. You would know what water and better be able to plant for water through a system like that, potentially. Minimize impacts associated with the siting, development, and operation of utility services on adjacent properties and the natural environment. This is proposed, again, to be running along an existing right-of-way. So it's minimizing, keeping that stuff in, from, rather than being scattered in a centralized place. And then, you know, we're supposed to be, as policy one of goal one, ensure that energy communication, solid waste facility, and other public facilities and services are available for future development. So, you know, this just, again, helps with that potentiality. The shoreline development area is envisioned to be developed as residential. That's what it's designated as. So anything that can help do that meets that goal. And not anything, but this type of a situation, what it does is starts to transition from rural services to more of a controlled and monitored system, assuming folks connect to the system. And that's a different, that's a whole different thing, too. My understanding is that this is for future, not really much for existing. And I don't know how that would work. You know, in other words, somebody switching off their well to connect to the system. I don't know how that would work, but that would be, again, between them and the state. People that have exempt wells don't have water rights, like the term water rights. Okay, the water rights are, are granted by the state. You have a certain allocation of water. Exempt wells are first in time, first in line. Which means that if somebody with an older well will always have a right over your right. Unless you have a granted water right. Then if you have a granted water right by the state, whatever that amount is, you're guaranteed. And if somebody makes it so that you have less than that, then there, you can take action against them. Exempt wells, it's a matter of who is in first. So if I build my well, you build your well, then you build your well, and your well starts causing my well to go funny, you have to turn your well off. He may have to, but I don't. Just because first in line, first, or first in time is first in line.
But that doesn't apply to this, right?
This is a granted water right. They own the water, they've owned the water and had that right. And that's what they've transferred to this system. From a personal property use, or actually, it was irrigation, wasn't it? It's an irrigation well, so they have an allocation of water. They petitioned the state to switch that allocation from an irrigation use because there's no need for the irrigation, because all the land is being turned into houses, say. It's not uncommon for that to be granted. Then they convert it to, or even maybe it's a portion of. So say I've got, I've got a hundred gallons. I want to take fifty of it, keep it for irrigation, transfer the other fifty over to another property that I have control on. I haven't gone beyond my original right. I've translocated it. To the point where also, as, like, for example, the city annexes in a property, right? Or they go off well and connect to the city of Pasco's water system, and they had a water right. That water right can be transferred to the city, or it can be sold to somebody else, somewhere else, along that same water course. There's, yeah, water's an interesting thing.
But you're, you have a change of use for the water.
That's-
Oh, it's change of use?
Correct. And that's done between the state.
So you have ag use of water that requires that water maybe seven, eight months of the year? And residential, they need that water?
Right.
Or seven, you know, sixty-five years?
But it's not our water. It's the state's water. The state will decide how they want that water allocated.
That's not something that we will-
Oh, no.
-think about or even worry about?
I have no authority over it.
Right.
So, I mean, I can worry and stress one way or the other, but I have no control. Yeah.
Handle when the state-
It's, 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 the state owns water. The state allocated what the use was whenever they issued the right. The state always has that ability to refuse to change it, keep it the same. They can do whatever they want. It's their water. The landowner has a right to utilize it, and they also have a right to request for that change. And if the state agrees with that change, that's between them and the state. We don't have any control over people's water. If they don't, then-
They can't proceed with that?
They can put in a lot of irrigation. Now-
Different use for the water? That's what I don't understand is you-
Real quick. So irrigation water. Well, I used to have irrigation water from a pump. Your pipes fill it with sand and all sorts of other resting things sometimes, you know. Point being is irrigation water isn't necessarily the same process as drinking water. So the well source may be the same, but what comes up and what it filters through and over various other elements. Or they could have been using potable grade water for irrigation. I don't know. It depends on the system and the specific site. But you were going to ask, I'm sorry.
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of segues into what I was going to ask about the differences between the use of water. Like you say, the state owns irrigation water and the domestic water. One is above ground and one is below ground, as far as irrigation, to a certain extent.
Generally speaking, yeah.
So they make that determination, well, we're going to allow you to transfer this irrigable water that you were using before, so many acre feet of water that you have available, and transfer that into a water use that is going to be strictly, like you said, twenty-four, it's going to be a twelve-month supply of domestic water that is extracted from the ground. It's going to affect the aquifer, maybe. And the difference between exempt and granted well. So they, let's just say that they are allowed to, they are allowed to extract so much water out of this well because it's going to be regulated. Trying to figure out how this all goes together. Because what we're looking at here is we're just going to be looking at the components of this system.
Ours is land use, not water use.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly. But I just haven't noticed this email. I don't know if this is correct, but they said they had to go through a test well before they can even determine how that's going to affect the aquifer surrounding area.
I'll leave Mr., or not Mr. Harm, the guy from Harm. A little young for Mr. Harm, right?
Same, getting the most before the wagon type thing.
Right, but just because, so say we approve this, that doesn't mean it's going to happen.
Right.
They have a thousand other steps they got to go through.
We're approving something that might not happen.
We're approving, we're reviewing and making comment on the siting of the above-ground structures. So water policy is not a local issue. So whatever they had the grant to, whatever they've worked out with the state, is the state will make those determinations because it's the state's water. It's not our water. We use the water, but it's not our water in the eyes of the state. And the state will work with them. And I would hope that they make those calculations as well. Like, let's say you got a hundred acre feet on a nine-month utilization. I'm hoping maybe on a residential, they drop that allocation to, or accommodate the fact that it's a twelve-month system. But we, that's them, the state agencies, are the ones who make these determinations based on whatever science and metrics that they utilize. It is not our call. We could disagree with anybody grant, being granted a water right by the state. So if Joe out there somewhere applied to the state, got a water right for a hundred acre feet, drilled his well, we'd never know about it. State would, but they wouldn't report that to us because we have no say on whether or not you can put a well on your property. The water, just like Leighton said, we're here about land use, not water, allocations or anything like that. And frankly, I don't think we want to get into that battle.
It's no different than when Easter days did their feedlot. Because it was for stock, they didn't even talk to anybody. They could drill a well and pull two million gallons a day out of the, out of it. But state law says they can't. So it's, like he said, we're here for the above-ground structures, whether you agree with it or not.
Well, I know why we're here. I'm just trying to get a snapshot of where the state's at when they punch it. They allow a large well to go, and then when everybody else, these exempt wells goes dry.
Then it's between that resident that had the dry well and the state.
Yeah.
So there's no risk to the county.
The state's not going to come out and drill-
We're not liable on this, no. It's not. We don't control the water. Otherwise, there'd be a Franklin County water board or something like that that did that, yeah.
But he technically could not do this at all if we didn't approve the conditional use permit for the infrastructure?
That's a different duck, and-
Come up with a really good reason to deny it.
Yeah, I would, I would be curious as to exactly what was the justification for, for such a situation.
It's not pretty. No, I'm, I'm joking.
It just, it, you know, it's, folks have to understand that we have powers, but we're not all-powerful. Frankly, cities have significantly more local control and power, I guess you could say, than counties do. Again, we're allowed to do that which has been granted to us by the state. Cities can do all but what is prohibited by the state. Cities can do all but what is prohibited by the state. But we can only do things the state says we can. The cities can do anything except for what the state says they can't. So, now, this particular property is technically on agricultural comprehensive designation and AP-20 ground. However, the, the use or the installation, again, is not prohibited, and, and it is an unclassified use, so it could be cited in any zone in Franklin County. Um, there's no zone that would prohibit this type of use. Um, rural shoreline development lammert has a maximum residential density of one dwelling unit per acre to one dwelling unit per five acres, depending on the underlying zoning classification, which can be RC-1, rural community one, or rural community five. There's also still a couple AP-20s floating around in there, and they would be allowed one unit per twenty acres unless they did something different to the property. So, AP-20 zone has two distinct purposes. Proposed construction will meet purpose statement A, but not purpose statement B, as it does not apply to this project. You didn't include the purpose statement.
Purpose statement B has to deal with subdividing the land.
So, I'll read them into the record. Okay. So, purpose statement A. The agricultural production 20 zone is designed to maintain the agricultural economy of the county by preserving the found, farmlands that are used for farming and that are su- suited to such use. The county comprehensive plan designates the county's agricultural lands. Majority of land in this zoning district has access to irrigation water or is surrounded by lands with access to irrigation water. So, it meets that. Residential subdivisions, which is B, this is B. Residential subdivisions are not compatible with the intended agricultural production 20 zone. Short plats may be permitted for farm labor housing or where the landowner wishes to sell the farm, see definition of farm, and keep the house where in cases where deemed appropriate by the Board of County Commissioners. So, the reason why B, just like, the thing, we're not, we're not talking about building a residential subdivision here. It's just that this happens to be the location of a facility to serve actually the other side. Um, which is the RC-1 and RC-5 lammert, the rural shoreline lammert. Staff did receive comments from following agents during the comic period, Franklin County Public Works, South Columbia Irrigation District, Department of Ecology, and Department of Archaeological and Historic Preservation. Uh, the recommended findings of fact is that the proposed construction of the Group A public water system in the AP-20 zone is in accordance with the goals and policies of the county's development regulations, zoning, and the applicable comprehensive plan. Proposal will not adversely affect public infrastructure. The proposal will be constructed, maintained, and operated to be in harmony with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. Location and height of the structure and site design will not discourage the development of permitted uses on property in the general vicinity or impair the value thereof. Operation connection with the proposal will not be more objectional nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, vibration, dust, traffic, or flashing lights than would be the operation of any permitted uses within the district. And the proposal will not endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare if located where proposed. Um, in addition to the standard conditional use permit language, it will need to require, um, staff is suggesting that they comply with the following conditions. Construction of proposed Group A system is located in the AP-20 zone and is in I shouldn't, okay. Which consists of, um, is adjacent to the rural shoreline development lammert, which consists of rural community RC-1 zone, it also has RC-5 in there. Comprehensive plan, land use designation of the site is agricultural. Individual building permits, as deemed by the building official from the Franklin County Building Permit, shall be required for all proposed structures. All proposed structures for the water system facility, except the backup generators, shall be engineered by a civil engineer, whether an individual or form licensed as such in the state of Washington. The reason why backup generators are just delivered, they don't, they don't build those on-site. They just show up. Um, applicant will need to comply with any other state, local, or federal regulations pertaining to this development, in other words, they've got a few other folks other than us to satisfy before this'll get going, or get done. Um, any exterior lighting shall be directed on-site as not to interfere with the comfort and repose of adjoining property owners. Site shall be landscaped, including required site screening as provided for in FCC Chapter seventeen-point-seven-four landscaping and screening. All storm drainage shall be retained on-site and controlled by way of drainage wells, dry wells, French drains, or other means as approved by the county engineer, the South Columbia Basin Irrigation District and/or the the, uh, Department of Ecology. Best management practices to minimize dust air in construction shall be used. Um, due to the fact that this is a active property, meaning they've been tearing it up out there for quite a while, um, we are, um, requiring a inadvertent discovery protocol be in place for the archaeological stuff. Um, if it were virgin ground, where nobody had been doing anything, it might be a different determination, but, um, yeah, that, that site's been tore up and been being used for decades, so it's not likely there's anything out there that inadvertent protocol wouldn't find. Shall comply with the requirements recommendation of Franklin County Public Works. Current franchise agreement or franchise agreement application shall be required for all utilities within the county right-of-way. Whether or not that's actually gonna, you know, that'll be discussed between them and, and, um, these usually apply to, um, the right to use the water right-of-way, exactly how that works with Public Works will be project-specific. An approach permit is required to access Franklin County roads, this would be for the access coming onto the property. There may already be an existing one. If there it is, Public Works will review that to determine whether or not it meets current standards and if, if there's a requirement to do anything additional. And then, any extension crossing the roads will be addressed at the time of application. So, as they put in this main line, it may sit for a year or two, but then all of a sudden they start feeding off into these um, subdivisions or whatever to the west every time they do that. Or maybe they'll do them, you know, simulta- or however they wanna work that. But each time they go across Fraser Road, they'll need to talk with Public Works about how to mitigate that. Um, they may have to go under, they may not be allowed to go through. Then, parking on gravel, as proposed, is allowed as long as activity of the site is even frequent. So generally, it's gonna be just for maintenance, operations, repairs, those types of things, it's testing. It's not like somebody's gonna be sitting there seven days a week or anything. Um, it needs to be set back in appropriate distance to allow for ingress and egress. Um, there will be, you know, no parking along Fraser Roads prohibited, it's not, well, for one thing, a lot of us not even in yet, so, well. But that, as that goes, see, that's the thing, as it builds, you kinda wanna put that in, that type of infrastructure at the time. You don't wanna come back three years later, tear up the road, and then put in your water pipes. So, Fraser Road is in chunks going through there. It's continuous, then it stops, then it continues, and Dent Road is going to eventually become Fraser Road. And up north, it does stuff and picks up again. So, my, whoops, my point is, is if they're approved, then they can start putting that pipe in before the asphalt's laid. If they're denied, they know not to worry about putting the pipes in. It's that kind of a thing. But Fraser Road is intended to run from, it's, uh, where Dent ends on, uh, Burns. Way up, I think, if not self-landing. It, it goes, it goes up and will connect with Columbia River Road. It's envisioned to punch all the way through. In fact, a lot of the subdivisions are kinda contingent on that occurring.
They put their main right along Fraser Road and then stub out to each property?
Potentially, yeah, I mean, no, not parcel, probably basically Fraser would become a collector, arterial. So, residential feeders will come into that, but it'll be limited access, most likely going up. But I can't speak exactly to that because, again, chunks of it are undeveloped with the alignment. Um, and then subdivisions, they don't, we always prohibit, um, direct access. For example, that's why all of the places in Spencer's along Burns, you know, they've got the prohibition on the plat, no access from the units, you have to come in, go out, and then come in. That's, that's just good planning, you don't- Fraser is going to become that primary north-south corridor, so it'll probably, when I say limited access, I mean, it's unlikely we're gonna like prohe- allow folks, generally speaking, to just build right on the edge of Fraser Road. But it depends, depends on how it develops and exactly what the land subdivisions around it look like.
Fraser Road is right off of Columbia River Road, that the far, the most northern part of that is, isn't it?
Yeah, Dent ends, right at, I believe at the Underwood property.
Out by the fire station.
But see, and then there's a big gap where there is no road. And the only way you can really get up there is you go up through like McDonald and this weird twisty-turvy and little four-wheel-ins involved sometimes because there's no four-wheeling because it's a bad road. If that does the connection, because it's not four-through. Everybody's supposed to go out to Columbia, so this'll start creating a alternative route and s- which is sorely needed, we need more north-south connections in, in that side.
Shot from Columbia River Road-
Pretty much, to Burns.
All the way to Burns.
Yeah, or you can hook in and, and take sixty-eight. Um, you know, and the city is working to try to get some of that stuff, or Road Broadmoor, um, when that stuff gets built out, however it gets built out. But, yeah, starts providing more alternative routes, which we need. Yeah, no parking on the road, and then there's signage, any signage indicating, you know, what the facility is, we'll have to meet our codes. So, basically, they're shooting for and getting approved by us for what they submitted. Any requests to expand or make it bigger or different, we'll trigger another, um, at a, at a minimum, an amendment, but potentially a new CUP. Um, and an amendment to a CUP pretty much goes through the same process as a new CUP, so. Um, any changes as far as the, um, number of u- units, the, the, you know, we wanna put in a third reservoir, any of those types of modifications. However, if they brought up a second generator, probably wouldn't care. But, if they're doing anything that affects capacity or outputs or anything like that, they, they would have to come back to us again to, to look at it. And then they'll have to comply with the requirements set forth by the Washington Department of E- Ecology, Washington Department of Health, Office of Drinking Water, and Franklin County Conservancy Board. Basically, the folks that they're already working with, and anybody else that they have to get approvals for. Um, trust me, you don't wanna start operating a water system without proper approval serving other people. You get in trouble real fast. And it won't be us coming down on you. So, um, any questions? And again, um, the applicant's representative is here, and they can best answer any technical questions.
Representative wish to speak?
Yeah.
You're up. Cause I'm not hearing any questions for me. You can do it from there or sit down, however you like. And if there's anything you want me to click on.
Yeah, okay, uh, yeah, my name's Braden Anderson, from Harms Engineering, and, um, representing Randy Mullen for the Rich Vee Water System. Um, I mean, he pretty much outlined the whole, uh, system. But, yeah, this is basically a system that's meant to be only for domestic use, uh, for these developments that are going in north of Pasco. Irrigation will have to be provided separately. So, that'll be part of what we're, how we transfer the water. But the way this came about was Randy has land that he would like to develop, he also has a water right that he can use to provide water. And if you use a water system to provide water to these developments, it's more efficient. And, um, and, and so he can, you know, adds value to the lots if they have water provided, as opposed to everyone having to drill their own well. So that's the, kinda the origin of it, um, and that's what, uh, we're involved with, putting together the water system plan and eventually to designing and, uh, building the actual, um, site to provide the water. Um, I think the only thing I would add to the, another advantage of this is that the way we're gonna do it with two wells, two reservoirs, a backup generator, provides more redundancy to a system than you would normally get through a bunch of individual wells. If the power goes out, if a well goes down, if a reservoir's out, you have a backup that will continue to provide water in case, uh, in case people still need it, so. Um, the other advantage of this is we'll also provide fire flow, which you wouldn't necessarily get from individual wells. Most, most people's wells wouldn't be able to provide enough water, water for, to provide a fire. So, part of the domestic system will be fire flow, and then again, irrigation will be separate. Um, we are in the process of taking care of all these other things with these other agencies. Um, the, uh, we're, we're in the process of transferring the water right with Ecology. Uh, and we have been approved to construct a well to determine how much water is there. That's very important to Ecology, to make sure that, uh, yeah, it's not gonna ca- cause adverse problems for everyone else um, to build, to build a new well here. Um, so that's all kind of in their process, um, we're still working our way through that. Um, and then, of course, our water system plan, which, uh, was included in the packet, um, will be reviewed by Department of Health once we have more information on that, on the water availability and, uh, yeah, source approval. So, yeah, I mean, that's basically it. Um, the system will promote residential development in the area. Uh, we, it's more efficient a way of doing it than by doing a bunch of individual wells, and, uh, has other, other benefits such as fire flow. Any questions, technical questions for me?
I have a question about the height of the two reservoirs.
I was just gonna say, I realize I did not explain the heights and stuff, but go ahead, please.
Yeah.
I'm sitting there going.
Yeah, uh, so, yeah, these two reservoirs will probably be either steel or concrete tanks. Uh, we need to provide enough water, um, for two days' worth for the full build-out of the system. Uh, whether that happens all at the beginning or as the system grows, depends. So originally, I think I put in thir- two thirty-by-thirty-five-foot-tall tanks would be required. Um, those are pretty tall, and there are kind of advantages doing tall versus, uh, tall and narrow versus wider and shorter. But I think it'll be better for the system to do something a little wider and a little shorter. So I'm thinking maybe now like thirty-five by twenty-five-foot-tall, two tanks.
And the, the height limit in the area is thirty-five feet.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's standard, we got ag buildings that those usually stay at thirty-five, cause otherwise they have to go to the conditional use permit. So, um, but, we've got some that are over thirty-five feet. I just went through a process. And one thing, I know that we had a comment regarding, um, you know, it needs to be landscaped and stuff. Um, that is a requirement, and there needs to be a minimum of a six-foot fence. Oh, we lost. Is it just this, or is it everything?
The audio still go, still, still works.
Okay, so, do we shut up for a minute, or do we?
Well, if the audio's still going, it should be.
Yeah, the audio is usually still going.
Yeah, and the camera's already coming back.
Okay. Okay. God love technological awesomeness. Anyways, so there will be, you know, landscaping, screening requirements as required under the code.
Those will be established at the time of the permit put in to do structures, right?
Yeah, when they go to build, when they submit, we'll go through all of that stuff at that time. That'll be part of the building application. They'll need to submit a landscaping plan and show how they're going to screen it or, or make it blend in and, and those types of things. But is that, that, it's almost never required. I don't know if you've noticed that. But this type of facility specifically is called out in the landscaping code because it's, it's not industrial, but it's in close proximity to residential uses. In fact, for quite a while, I think that all is going to look like if somebody's building big weird things on his farm property. You're not, you know, and so I don't think it'll look much different, but it is going to. One, they're going to have to do it for homeland security purposes because it is a public water system, they'll have to have security and things like that. And unless, I'm, I know that that's the case with a municipal water system, so I'd assume it's the case here. And then, but yeah, you know, screening, landscaping to help it kind of mirror up with the million-plus-dollar homes out in that area. Anyways, any other questions?
Is there any in-person public testimony for the project? Any against or neutral? Is there any call-in testimony? Email testimony?
Nope.
Does staff have any final comments?
Nope, just have a suggested motion.
Is there any clarification of public statements needed by anyone in the audience? Public testimony portion of the public hearing for CUP 2023-3, SEPA 2023-09 is closed. Is there any discussion amongst planning commission prior to entertaining a motion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Our suggested motion is for approval. If this is not the will of the board, so remember. If you like this motion, go ahead and go with it. First and a second, whether you like it or not, that'll at least get us through the process. Remember, remember how all that works. So this is what we call an affirmative, and that's what we always try to coach them as. And then you'll either recommend to approve, recommended, or, or not. Don't, then that dies on the vine or, yeah. So anyhow, I just want to remember, because it gets confusing. People will be like the first, and then they won't do the second. And it's like, the second just allows for discussion, has nothing to do with your opinion on the matter.
I move the Franklin County Planning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the six findings of fact and the 14 conditions of approval detailed in the staff report and approved case file CUP 2023-03 and SEPA 2023-09.
It has been moved by Commissioner Lowe and seconded by Commissioner Vincent that we forward to the Board of Commissioners a recommendation of approval for CUP 2023-3, SEPA 2023-9, with the six adopted findings of fact and 14 conditions of approval. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question. How close is, are the new subdivisions and this actual piece of property to the urban growth area?
Okay, just a, I can, I can give you some idea. I don't actually have a map on me. That might work, but we'll, whoops. So. That is Kohler. Burns is right, I want to, yeah, I think, then this is, so where does the UGA end? Over here? About right there. It ends at Burns. It didn't, it, it took in Spencer, did it take in Spencer's? Yeah, they, they've, see, this is where the UGA, there is no UGA over here. It's all been annexed. All of that portion of the UGA except for a couple of little pockets. So, so technically, the city of Pasco is a UGA. But then you have the UGA that we all commonly call the UGA, which is the Franklin County UGA. See, and that's part of it, is the parlance is different down here. The way they, they speak to things is different than, so that's, so anyways. So you've got the UGA, that's for the city to grow into. But it's technically, that's the Franklin County UGA. Because we still have authority over it. When they annex it in, it becomes the city, the city of Pasco is, is another UGA. All cities are UGAs. That's technically actually the city of Pasco UGA. It's the city of Pasco, literal municipal boundaries. The Franklin County UGA is the area that the city is annexing into or Connel is annexing to. However, there's only one jurisdiction that could move into it. Why? Because Connel can't reach that far, Mesa can't reach. So we call it the city of Pasco UGA, but it's kind of, that terminology is not quite right. I'm sorry, I get technical sometimes like that. Long and short is the city has come up and they've annexed all the land up to the, the new boundary. They didn't really mess over here with the boundary very much. It kind of went up and then, but it's, it's, I want to say it ends about right, it's Dent. So it goes up Dent, takes in Dent, and, and it, over in this area, whereas, when you look like, say, where the airport is and stuff, the stuff's kind of runs pretty standard around Clark roughly. Over here, it goes, it starts doing a lot of that, so. But it's, it's roughly about right here, give or take a little bit. So it's a little south of there. The, you know, the city, you know, these properties are for one and five acres. Even with the water system, they're one to five acres. I mean, the water system doesn't give them any rights for increased density or anything else. Where it could benefit, though, is for example, with a PUD. We've got a 50-acre site. Whatever we end up deciding on the thing, but that's still being discussed with the board. But we've got a 100-acre site, proposed density allowance of 100 units because it's 100 acres. But you would have to put in 100 wells. Or you'd have to figure something out, multiple public class A wells, whatever. I mean, there's a, for class B or whatever. I mean, there's, there's all sorts of, in theory, ways you could do it. What this will do in that situation too, is it will, they'll be able to run that water out to those sites. But they could also, in theory, cluster them all on one side so that they're all like, say, only half the property is being used with houses and they're only on half-acre lots. But they're still limited to 100 units, potentially 120 if they do the set aside. And, and more flexible development patterns because right now, there's only one choice. Big lot, single-family home. Unless you do a PUD, then that's a different dynamic. But, so that's another thing. And like he said, the, the fire, that's a big one, is they'll be able to serve those lots with residential water. And they can require a connection as, as a part of the sale or not. It's really up to the, the owners and the, of the system and stuff. Again, we don't dictate how they're going to sell or hold their properties.
Any more discussion?
Just real quick, on the capacity. You mentioned, this would be designed for maximum water flow to say, if there was 100 acres, there'd be 100, you would design that for maximum homes to go into a one-acre lot then? And when you say fire flow, you're going to have to design that for fire protection, right?
Yes.
So to handle all that, so future, private developments.
He said yes. You're not on, just for, that's okay. That's why I keep repeating what you're saying.
Thanks.
Any more discussion? May we have a roll call vote, please?
Mike Ralas?
Yes.
Melinda Didier?
Yes.
Mike Vincent?
Yes.
Laden Low?
Yes.
Stacy Knighton?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
Motion approved. Is there a member of the audience who wants to comment on the items not listed on the agenda? Update on previous items?
I've got various things that are kind of in flux right now. But the swimming pool ordinance was approved, so the minimum height barrier now, you are still required to put it, install a fence, but instead of five foot, it's four foot. So that one went. I'm trying to think what else.
Oh, I started up the PUD, haven't we still got?
Yeah, the PUD, there was a little kerfluffle. Remember the packet of comments that I gave you guys the night of the meeting? We didn't include that in the planning, in the packet to the board. That got delayed, so that'll be final action probably on the 20th. So it went to the board. We were missing those comments. So board asked for those comments, and then finally got that fixed because I've never had that happen, so I wasn't even sure of the process. But we got that worked out and we're probably, we're looking at. And though technically we may not have had to notice, we want to make sure that we got notice out. So we're, we're going to do it the 20th instead of tomorrow, or the 13th. Yeah. Tomorrow is the Hooper, Hooper?
Yeah.
Hooper ADU will be going to the board for action next month. Now I'm moving into, oh, what do we got here? So yeah, okay. So, trying to think, that's about it. The other things haven't gotten to the board yet because there's been some change-up and a few things got delayed by a few weeks because of some issues. So we'll, but it has nothing to do with the applications or anything else. But I'm not going to get into much more on that. But they're moving. Upcoming planning commission meeting items for October. We're going to be doing a workshop on the zoning code. And this is what I call the heavy lift, meaning that the last time the zoning code was updated was in '08. This will bring it up to date to say 2019. Then over the course of '24 and '25. The reason why we're not doing it all now is because we'll never get it done. So we'll get this heavy bulk stuff that'll catch us up to a lot of paradigms and, and shifting to the 2019. In other words, our code was developed before the rush. This is looking at the world after the rush. The building boom, '08, yeah, we weren't doing much in '08. By 2010, we were gangbusters. Unfortunately, our code is written as if we were in '08, not the paradigm that we live in today. So it catches up to like, said, around 2018, 2019. Then over the course of '24 and '25, we may get it all done next year. We're going to be going in with a scalpel. So there's a bunch of things that have changed at the state level that we're going to be looking at incorporating, creating things like overlays, various other planning elements or tools that Franklin County hasn't had. And we're going to at least propose some of those to, and then by the time we're done with that, we should be up to date with basically things like the new ADU rules. There's, there's a bunch of stuff coming down for the comprehensive plan, which we're starting in next year because it has to be adopted by '26. So that stuff is stuff that's coming, but in October, it'll be, like I said, the workshop on the zoning code, the two CPAs for the docket. And then what?
A subdivision.
Oh, subdivision, okay.
All that on the agenda?
It's going to get fun, folks.
What, we'll be starting earlier?
No, nothing I'm aware of. When do we go to 6:30, Aaron?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so it's October. Not earlier than 6:30.
I would feel for six if anybody else is into it.
Remember.
Workshop.
Remember who makes your rules.
Could we make a motion?
You can do whatever you want. You guys also remember, I work for you, well, I don't know if work for you is the right word. You are an independent body. I answer, I bring you stuff, but I don't direct you. That's why it's so hard to get me to answer questions when you ask me what you're supposed to do.
We're doing it. Do we need to vote, or are we just going to say six? Does anybody oppose six?
Wait, if that's what you want to do, go ahead and take that vote, I would recommend. But we will have to change the bylaws potentially. Is that in the bylaws, can you recall?
Uh, yeah.
I think the start times are in there.
But we, we've never gone before 6:30?
Not that I'm aware of. It's always been 6:30 and seven.
It's always kind of evolved around what Claude had going on.
Well, that's an interesting tidbit, didn't know that. But as soon as you said it, made perfect sense. I'm trying to remember. I don't think it's called out in specific time. I think it says that shall meet regularly. So what I'll, I'll double-check to see whether or not there's anything special we have to do.
I'm not opposed to making it six.
You're okay with you can make it?
I like it. All right. What's it say? Hold on, Aaron's reading the bylaw.
So in the first thing, in Article Four, Meeting, Section One, Regular Meetings, A. Regular meetings, you know, basically it says typically held at the courthouse. Gives our address. Regular meetings shall be held the first Tuesday of each month and shall be open to the public. Regular meetings will begin at 7:00 PM, April through September, and 6:30 PM, October through March.
Not a problem. Remember, you guys, again, do your bylaws. As long as you do it by the rules for changing the bylaws, you can do that.
Need a motion?
Change the bylaw right now?
Uh, you kind of.
Well, considering there's two other board members that aren't here, they may get upset if you guys go and change the rules on them and not talk to them about it.
Well, maybe they should have come to the meeting. It's how my mom got to be the president of the Chamber of Commerce. Exactly.
And you guys are completely correct. How, you know, but I'm just saying.
Yep.
I mean, as a courtesy.
Put yourself in their position because they may, you know.
If they were here to vote, we're all positive if both of them were negative, it'd still pass.
This is true too.
That's their position right there. So.
Can we, do you, can we make a motion, or do you want us to, I mean?
I always get twitchy when people rush to change rules. Because I don't know if there's a, I don't know if there's something I'm missing. But I'm not aware of anything that would prohibit you from doing this.
I'd rather beg for forgiveness than ask for permission.
Exactly. So how, what, how formal of a vote do we have to have to change the bylaws?
The chair has to recommend, or just as far as I know.
What section is it? Four, Article Four, or something like that?
Article Four, but it's not one of those deals where it's gotta be on the agenda.
Yeah.
By law change, that would be the only.
That's what I'm, that's what I don't know. I don't have the bylaws in front of me.
Mike's got a pen, it could be on the agenda really quick.
But that's for next, next month.
Because if you're gonna do it as a new business, you would have to have that on the posted agenda in case members of the public wanted to, you know.
But I don't know if, again, you don't have to have public hearings on the bylaws.
Well, the, the other thing that might.
What does it say?
Well, it doesn't necessarily go with, it, it's saying directly that, it's the fact that.
Say.
Well, it comes to the section of, because for these items, particularly the subdivision, we've already noticed that it goes at six thirty.
Okay.
And so that's the other conundrum too. If you're going to change that, that could also be kind of an issue.
Yep, for the public. Yeah.
And for me, I would have to renotice it, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a proposal, sorry.
No, go, go.
How about we do the workshop at six and our regular meeting at six thirty?
I'm thinking, I'm not ignoring you.
Get it done in a half hour?
I don't know, I'm not running it. That's really up to you guys.
Who planned that? The guy that doesn't run the board.
No, 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 no. No, no, no. The CPA docket was supposed to be on tonight's agenda.
Which is done here.
So we didn't plan it.
So the workshop has to be it's that, that month?
If we don't start the process, we're never gonna get the zoning code updated. And do you guys want to keep, the longer we delay, the more we're in this weird archaic code situation.
I, I can get it done in a half hour.
But I don't know why we would not be able to do the workshop, it's not advertised. I just have to talk to my consultants to make sure that they would be available.
And then you can always, you know, if you need to, well, you haven't even posted your packets yet. So once you do that, you know, you can just amend your packet and zip.
Because there is no noticing on the workshop. That's, the, the workshop is not for the public.
Yeah.
So there is no.
Yeah.
I mean, the public can show up.
They can, but it's not, it's not for them to engage with us.
Yeah.
And they can also, I just have to look into it. I'll see what I can do, let's put it that way. I'll see what I can do to move that meeting up to six for the workshop.
Just notify us.
I'll let you guys know, but I'll also let you know whether, sorry, we can or we can't do it. That said, that's October, that's the first one. If there's others you want, because the board has now shifted over the two Wednesdays. I still can't wrap my head around yet. So, you know, every now and again, we'd have those evening conflicts, those are gone now. And we were actually discussing switching this to Wednesday to stop that happening, but then the board switched. Because apparently back in the day, they actually met on Wednesdays.
Yes, they did.
Which, again, never heard of that before. Planning commission, or boards always meet on Mondays or Tuesdays. I've never heard of one meeting on Wednesday. I'm not saying they don't, I'm just saying, I mean, there's thirty-nine counties, I don't know all of them. But, yeah, so, so, yeah, we can look into that. We do have an issue with noticing. I would really rather not, especially the CPA dockets, because there were seventeen hundred mailings associated with those.
Does that, your workshop meeting started at six and your regular meeting started at six thirty? And then maybe if you don't mind, you could put that on business or even old business for us to discuss changing that permanently.
I like that.
For that, just that time period of the year.
Well, do you want to? We do seven o'clock basically because farmers are out there in the fields. So let's, let's do this for, yeah, we'll put that on the agenda for discussion. You guys may want to change all the times. If we're gonna, if we're gonna do it, let's look at the situation and determine whether this body continues to want to meet at that timeframe and how you guys want to do it. Because apparently we're pretty much doing it because that's the way Claude always did it. Well, Claude's not here anymore, hasn't been here for a while. Yeah, yeah, but we'll have that on the agenda, and I'll check on that tomorrow. See, if you ask me, could have asked Nicole today, I saw her today. Actually, I think Millie Ann's doing that presentation, but, but anyhow, yeah, we'll get that, we'll see what we can do about that.
There's nobody here that it causes a hardship to, to get out of work early or anything? No, 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 no?
As it is, I gotta wait around town for two hours.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, if you guys want to start just switching over to six o'clock, a regular meeting or even. Five thirty can't do that.
No.
I don't think that's just not fair to the public.
Okay, so six is the time then?
That allows folks to, if they need to grab something to eat, it's tight, but it gives them time. And then get back, but also if we, we're on it and it's a short agenda, they can be back on the road by seven instead of just starting. So I don't like nine o'clock evenings, so I don't. And again, we're here, you guys are here to provide us, you know, recommendations to represent the public. So we're also here to accommodate your schedules as much as we can. I mean, you can start having them during the day if you wanted to, but.
That might be a little hard to pull off. You might have some.
City of Spokane has them during the day, or did they change that?
Yeah, I think they still are at like.
Nine AM.
Yeah, it does.
Well, no, no, they're like at three o'clock.
Three in the afternoon?
Yeah.
I, I went in one time and they were doing it and they were having lunch, and they about screamed at me because it was only for the planning commissioners. That was at some sort of noon meeting or something. I was like, well, you didn't say anything, anyways.
Yeah.
So, anything else?
What's the short course that's?
Oh, sorry. Aaron?
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll have a short course basically just right back here on next Wednesday on the thirteenth. At six to nine PM, so we'll just kind of go over some of the basics. It'll be kind of presentation between me, you'll, you'll also get to meet, I guess, the planner for, from Commerce, so he'll be here to kind of do some presentation stuff. And then we also got a legal person too, doing some presentations. So it kind of gives you a big, wide kind of, you know, the basics and everything else as far as for planning, you know, Open Public Meetings Act and, is it a poll record?
If you have not done all those things, and technically you're supposed to do them periodically, I don't.
Yeah, I think it's like every two years or so.
I would strongly, if there's any possibility, recommend attending because it will clear that, and you guys will be good. And here, you can also do online.
Yeah, you could do, I think there's some online ones that come up.
No, 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 I'm talking about attend this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can join, join virtually.
Tomorrow, we'll send you guys information and invites if you have, you've already sent it to them, right?
No, I don't think I've sent like a online invite, but I have.
Hit them informa, we'll, we'll get you guys information tomorrow.
Yeah.
Make sure you have it so you can decide, but if you can, I would really appreciate you all attending. Lot of rules have changed and a lot of weirdness coming out of Olympia has come down.
Yeah, yeah, and in fact, actually, that was one of the discussions, because, you know, part of that working group for the Open Public Meetings Act is I think they're looking at redoing some of their slides and stuff like that, trying to refresh, re-update, so I don't know if they're necessarily gonna pull that trigger at this one or not, but, but still, yeah, that was kind of something that came up, so.
Okay, planning commission is adjourned at eight thirty-one.